Good evening. We call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission for March 7, 2017. We have all seven Planning Commissioners present. We have a consent calendar that consists of minutes from February 21, 2017. Commissioner Sikoski?
I move to approve the minutes.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Sikoski, a second by Commissioner Hanson. Any discussion in motion?
I'm gonna just interject here that I think the Jew did a great job of condensing it so that they were actually beautiful.
Thank you, yet still contains the pertinent information. Any other discussion in motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. The first public hearing we have tonight is a text amendment, low-power radio service antennas to amend the 2009 West Jordan City Code Section 13-2-3 and Title 13, Chapter 16, for citywide applicability. City of West Jordan is the applicant, and Mr. Mark Forsyth.
Alright, thank you Chairman. So, I'll just start with a little bit of background history on what triggered this whole change. So, basically, how this came about was there were two legal challenges. The first one was from Crown Castle, who wanted to basically expand a monopole one, which is a monopole with flush-mounted antennas, that was directly across the street from residential homes. So, what they were proposing was a 13-foot wide array. We wrote them back, told them that that was not allowed under our current ordinance, because they didn't meet the separation requirements from the homes. They challenged that, we took it to the Attorney's Office. And basically, Crown Castle's argument was that our code was in violation of some FCC regulations that are part of the Infrastructure Report and Order, Section 14-153, which was essentially an implementation of provision concerning co-locations in the 2012 Middle-Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act, which was passed by the US Congress. So, we had our attorneys look at that, and basically their conclusion was that our code was in fact in violation of those requirements for co-locations, and staff went ahead and approved that permit. The second legal challenge came about when SBA Communications Corporation applied for a building permit for a co-location, at which time, staff wrote back to them and told them that they needed to go through an administrative conditional use permit review process. So, they contested that as well, claiming that that was overreach from, also from the FCC regulations, which were in that section, that prohibit excessive documentation, other than essentially proving that the proposed co-location meets the FCC's criteria for a non-substantial change to an existing tower. So, again, we ran that by the Attorney's Office, and they again concluded that our code was essentially in violation of that as well, and that we needed to essentially establish a new review process for co-locations. So, after that, staff, the city planner, and the deputy city attorney got together in a meeting and just kind of discussed some of these changes that needed to be made, and we brought to light in that meeting that there were some provisions in our code that were, that needed to be tweaked and were essentially in conflict, and so we figured that this was a good time to make all of those changes at once, rather than just kind of doing it piecemeal. So, we talked a little bit about those, the FCC standards for co-locations, so the standards that we're proposing are essentially taken directly out of those requirements. So, the first one is a height extension, which basically allows them to increase the height of the tower 10% of the, of the tower height or 20 feet, whichever is greater. A width extension, kind of in a similar vein, where they can increase the width of the tower 20 feet, well, since most cell towers are only about two feet wide, the 20-feet provision would apply most of the time. Third one would be equipment cabinets, as long as they're not adding more than four additional cabinets to their equipment compound, they can be approved. And then a lease space expansion, as long as they're not expanding that original lease area, that was approved, they can, we can just run that through as a permitted use. Some of the other changes we're adding are some new definitions, so some of the big, the big ones are microcell antennas. These are essentially antennas that are placed on a utility pole or another pole within the right-of-way. Those are actually also covered in the FCC regulations to a limited extent. Basically, they allow, and I'll go over those later, but they basically govern height and width, so. Co-location, just further defining that in our code, that's another term that we wanted to clarify. Stealth antennas, that's another one that we wanted to give a little bit of definition to, so we've actually have two terms for stealth. One is a stealth pole, and another one would be for stealth antenna, and the difference between the two is that a stealth antenna would essentially be antennas that are placed within a, fully enclosed within a building. So, a good example would be the antennas that are out of the Citi Mart building within that tower slash sign structure. So, and then the stealth pole, obviously, that would be something more akin to a monopole that's disguised as maybe a pine tree or, or a flagpole. Flagpoles are probably one of the more common ones for West Jordan, since we get a lot of open space. So, we've also added a new use table. Basically, right now, all of our cell towers, antennas, they're all lumped under one definition in the accessory use table, which is kind of an umbrella term, which is low-power radio facilities. So, we've kind of wanted to break that down a little bit into the different types of applications that, that are part of that definition, so microcells, stealth antennas, roof-mounted antennas, and basically created a new table that's easier to use and a little more clear. So, just, just to clarify, the permit, the applications that would be just permitted as a right, or just go through a simple staff review, would be co-locations, microcell applications, and stealth antennas. And then the administrative conditional uses would be new, any new towers, so that would include monopoles, stealth towers, and then any building-mounted antennas, which would include roof-mounted or wall application, mounted applications. So, going to the cell tower changes, so most of the standards that we have in place in our current code will remain, they'll just be reformatted, but we did want to change some of the separation standards, particularly because there wasn't really any clear language for the requirements for non-residential zones. So, what we've done is essentially made that a lot more clear. So, for residential zones, there's going to be a 300-foot minimum separation from any residential structure, and then for non-residential zones, we've decided to base it more off of height, so the setback would be equal to two times the total height of the proposed We've also included some new regulations for stealth towers, particularly because there were none whatsoever in our current ordinance. So, basically, what it boils down to is that if, for instance, a new monopole is not able to meet those setback requirements, they could then go to a stealth design for a reduced setback, which would be equal to the height of the tower times 1.25. So, basically, the setback would be roughly equal to the size of the tower. So, some of the new regulations and new sections that we've added are stealth towers, co-locations, and microcells. So, stealth towers, I've already talked about a little bit with separation standards. We've also more clearly defined that, what constitutes a stealth tower, so we've given some examples in that definition to kind of guide that conversation and guide that design. Co-locations, we've already talked about. Microcells, so these are something that's currently not allowed in our ordinance, but is more or less allowed by the FCC regulations, and so we've added some, basically the dimensions, The FCC regulations allow them to extend up to 10 feet above the height of a pole, and for width, they can extend out six feet. So, now what we've done is we've tried to give the city a little bit of control in that six-foot extension requirement, basically stating that if, that they would need to either flush-mount the antennas to the pole, or they would need, or that the array or pole would not be allowed to exceed the width of the existing power pole. So, the only way that they could get an exception to that is if there is some sort of physical reason that they needed to extend out no more than that six feet, which determination could be made by the zoning administrator. So, we've also added some, some other requirements, particularly in terms of design, so making sure that the colors match, the pole, that it's, that it's not going to be something overly intrusive. Electrical boxes, we've added a bunch of standards for those, particularly concerning placement, width, the amount of clearance that they need to be from the ground, and that sort of thing. And then the franchise agreements, we've had the Attorney's Office look over those to make sure that they, anyone who applies for a microcell would need to enter into an agreement with the city, or depending on the situation, perhaps UDOT or UTA, and then we would come up with the administrative process to, to determine that. So, and then other than that, the only other changes would be the revised format, which basically, right now, our code is kind of a patchwork of amendments that have come through over the years, and we, we really wanted to clean that up and make it a little bit more user-friendly and conducive to future amendments that would keep in that standard, easy-to-use format. So, based on these explanations and those that have been outlined in the staff report, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation to the City Council for the proposed text amendment to Title 13 of the West Jordan Municipal Code relating to cellular transmission towers and low-power radio antennas, with, with the addendum language as was presented and discussed in the pre-meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Forsyth. Any questions for staff, seeing as how the staff and the applicant are one and the same? Commissioner Green?
I've got a couple, and this is mainly based on wording, so I'm gonna go through a couple of them. So, in the addendum, in 1316-8, that, that section A, the one that's highlighted in red, it says prohibited application, and it says, public property, the attachment of any attached utility pole, whatever, or managed by the City of West Jordan or any other public entity is prohibited, yet if you turn to G, it allows the property, it allows for an antenna, as long as there's a lease with the city, in G2. And in that same section, it says you can't put new poles in a public right-of-way, but then it says, for antennas located in state public right-of-way, you have a lease, and those, those two sections seem to contradict or have I missed something? It's prohibited, it's prohibited, we can't allow it someplace else, I guess that's my question.
I think you're right, and the reason that happened was, is it was kind of a last-minute thought, in fact, it didn't get into the main packet, that's the reason for the, this supplement, is the prohibitions were something that came up at the very end or after our last thought pattern, and so the prohibitions were added in, but then we probably missed the other applicable parts that we needed to change to make it congruent with that. So, yeah, it's a good catch, we need to make G2 consistent with those prohibitions.
And then, and then looking at, so if I, if you don't mind, I'll continue to go on a couple, just to answer the question, 1316-1, and the purpose, it says, it's, oh, it works on me. Thank you. It says, this chapter applies to commercial and private low-power radio services such as cellular or PCS, yet in 1316-3, it talks about amateur radio antennas. Are, are we trying to deal with amateur radio antennas in this ordinance, or is that C, Section C, an, an issue? Because I could, because most, because it seems to me that, and I'm not a radio person, so maybe there's an engineer down there that can give better answers, but it seems to me that most of the amateur radio stuff is actually fairly high-power.
Yeah, so the purpose of that section was basically just to refer it to FCC and state regulations, so in other words, any city code would not apply.
Okay. I'm just wondering why that's right in the middle of a low-power thing, but that, okay.
Probably because somebody that's looking in here for that might prefer, it's just a courtesy direction for them.
Yeah, we figured it was similar enough to some of these transmission towers, that it would be appropriate.
If you look in 1316-4, the monopole's number two, the wording, the wording specifically says, "non-residential zones," and then it says, "The monopole shall not be located within a distance from an existing residential structure or residential zone." Is that a, is that a, if we're talking about non-residential in, in A2, we probably need to change that wording about existing structure or existing zone and strike the words residential in that section, wouldn't, because the next section's residential.
Yeah, that probably makes sense, so I'll have to look at that too, to make sure that's consistent.
And then my last question?
I think the intent of that regulation was to make sure that they were, so in other words, if you had a cell tower within a, let's say a CG zone, and that CG zone was next to, say, an R110 zone, then you would, the applicant would just have to make sure that they're measuring that setback from the monopole to the residential structures that are there, or if, if it's just a vacant field that's zoned for residential, then you would measure to the zone boundary. Does that make sense, hopefully?
Well... Provides a buffer between...
Right, yeah.
I, I'm just, I, I guess I'm, I guess I'm confused, is that if we, if this, if this is the monopole sitting someplace, and the next, the, the, the abutting property is a residential zone, it wouldn't matter which zone it is, you'd still want to have the space multiplied, based on the structure multiplied by the, the formula there, right?
Right, yeah, two times the height.
So, I, I, it just seems that, okay, that it just seems the residential there may be superfluous. And then the last question I have, and this may be just off the wall, but when we're looking at 1366 on the wall-mounted, and it talks about 40 square feet for each exterior wall of the building, or 160 square feet per building, never mind, I answered my own question. I was just gonna ask, what happens when you have the Overstock.com building that's circular, but we could go, I mean, the, the building's circular, so you, would we allow, the, the question is, would we allow all 160 square feet on, it says may act, it, it says 40 feet for each exterior wall, so on Overstock, we would, that's one wall, so we would only allow 40 feet there. Is that, is that what we're saying?
I think it would be an interpretation issue at that point.
I would consider that one wall.
See, I would consider it one wall, but I could see, I could see a developer coming and saying, "Well, I'm just a big circular building, I get 160 feet, and I can place it anywhere I want on the building." I, I, you know, that, that's just a, obviously, that's a weird scenario, but you never know.
It limits him to one wall.
So, if we get a circular building, can we address it at that point?
Right.
Yeah. Overstock wants to relocate up the street.
Across the river.
Great, great questions, Commissioner Green. Any other questions for staff to see? Alright, well, this was agendaized as a public meeting, so we'd like to open up the public comment section, if there's anyone who'd like to speak on the side.
We have, we have, we have two potential nominees.
See, then we'll close the public comment section and bring back to the Commission for discussion and deliberation, meaning to a possible motion. Thoughts?
I'm just gonna make, I'm gonna make a motion, you pushed the wrong button, did I cut the mic, sorry, I pushed the wrong button, I need to make a right one.
Commissioner Green?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the, the staff recommendation with the following revisions. It's right at the top, thank you. Based on the findings set forth in the staff report on the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation to the City Council for the proposed text amendment to Title 13 of the West Jordan Municipal Code, as addressed in this report relating to cellular tower, low-power radio antennas with the denim languages presented and discussed in the pre-meeting, with the following amendments, and that is, strike paragraph 13-16-8G2, to make that more consistent with the prohibition in the public right-of-way, and striking the word residential in paragraph 13, the residential word twice, in 13-16-4A2 on page 28 of the staff report.
Commissioner Sikoski?
I like the intent, I have one concern, and that's, under 13-16-4, item two, it says, "Non-residential zones, the monopole shall not be located within a distance from an existing residential structure or residential zone, which is closer, or whichever is closer, that is, less than two times the total height of the monopole, and shall be calculated as follows," and then, so my understanding is you're trying to get rid of...
Well, but, but if we say, there's two, there's two here, there's two reasons here. One, if we say existing residential, then it doesn't matter how close the tower is to the next building over, so...
The one, the one thing that I worry about is, in item two, it says whichever is closer.
Right.
And that, there's no verbiage in the second, the, the second, in item three, it talks about just a straight line 300 feet, and I wonder, it would be good to have something, I don't know, I like, I like the verbiage, whichever is closer there, to define, you know, for a...
But, but right now, it says, "In a non-residential zone, the monopole shall be located within a distance from an existing resident, shall not be located within a distance from an existing," are we saying, I guess the question, when we go back to this before, and we can, I can modify my motion here, are we saying in a non-residential zone, that a tower does not have to have a space between a building?
Right, because this, right here in two, it's saying that if it's, if it's located within a, within a non-residential area, like community commercial, it, it has to be a minimum distance away from the zone, whichever is closer, so either the building or the zone, so it's like the property border, it actually says it that farther than item three.
Right, but it, but it says existing residential structure, so let's say we're in Jordan Landing, and you're putting it on a building, if that building is, doesn't have any residential around it, we don't care that it's 10 feet from the building next door, is that, that's what we're saying if we...
Yeah, so, so I should point out that we do have several examples throughout the city where they have placed a new cell tower behind, or right next to a building, usually it's a commercial building. A good example would be Ring's and the Smiths on Redwood Road and 700 South, so it's actually pretty common.
Okay.
I assume you're encouraged by our...
Alright, so I'll withdraw the, the one on 1316-4, and we'll leave that, but with, so I'll remake them, amend the motion with amending by dropping G2 from 13-16-8.
Great, we have a motion from Commissioner Green, a second from Commissioner Sikoski, any discussion of that motion, would you like it restated? Because you made two, I mean, you, you, two conditions there, so you're doing 13-16-8, but striking G2, but you're still striking residential times two.
No, no, just, just 1316-8, or just, just, yeah, yeah, just 1316-8G2.
The entire, not just the G2 portion, but 1316-8?
No, just paragraph G2.
So, keeping 1316-8, but not G2?
Correct.
And keeping your other portion that you mentioned, striking the word residential?
No, just, just ignore that.
Ignore that one completely. So, then the only thing that we're keeping is 13-16-8?
And, and striking, striking paragraph G2.
Got it. Claire? Wonderful, let's go for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. Which brings us toward our final agenda item this evening, text amendment infill orders. This is continuing from our last meeting, February 21, amending the 2009 West Jordan City Code, as we were just looking at that same code, adding Section 13-6 regarding infill development or citywide applicability, and Mr. Langford has this this evening.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any fancy PowerPoint for you tonight. I will refer to the city code in just a minute, but as a brief summary for the record, back in January, the City Council had their annual strategic planning retreat, and one of the items that they brought up was just the challenging nature of development and redevelopment here on the east side of the city. There, there's a lot of infill potential, and generally, infill development is, is sought after to kind of complete the fabric of the community, takes advantage of existing utilities and public services, so overall, the strain on the city is less. But there are some unique challenges to, to infill development. You've got to deal with the context of the existing, and most of the time, mature neighborhood, and so, you know, a vacant build that's been that way for 20, 30 years, sometimes it brings out a lot of opposition and, you know, questions and so forth from, from the surrounding neighborhoods. And so, over the years, we've, we've used our zoning ordinance, which is sort of like a tool that we use to create our community, and most of the ordinances that we deal with on a day-to-day basis deal with new greenfield development out west, and, and by and large, that works out pretty well, but some of these infill pieces, we struggle to use, use our current box of tools and, you know, setbacks and standards and so forth, it can be challenging. So, Council recognized that, they've asked us to draft this, at least an ordinance, so that they can, can discuss... So, um, council recognized that they've asked us to draft the, this, uh, at least an ordinance so that they can, can discuss, uh, what they'd like to see. Uh, we've done extensive research, uh, on different codes, uh, locally and nationally, and, um, I stated this in the pre-meeting, you could go one of two ways, you could go into a really detailed, uh, code that talks about all the various potential, uh, things that, that we may encounter with infill properties, uh, but those are lengthy, those are, uh, most of the time, very, very lengthy, uh, involved, uh, codes, and typically, uh, only smaller cities, uh, successfully use those. Uh, larger cities like, um, like West Jordan, um, typically will rely on a more, uh, uh, general, um, infill ordinance that allows the, the local elected officials to use their legislative discretion and, uh, and provide, uh, a means of flexibility for, for infill development. Um, so that's the, the direction that I took here with this, uh, draft language. Uh, I'm looking forward to, to getting your comments tonight and, uh, and, and hopefully tweaking this so that, that it really fits the needs of our community and, and then, uh, taking it out to the city council to get their, their thoughts on, on this proposed amendment. Hopefully, the end result will provide a, a good vehicle where we can start encouraging the, the infill and reuse and redevelopment and development of, of some of our oval properties in town, so turn it back to you.
Great, thanks, Mr. Langford. Any questions for staff slash applicant from the commission?
Not right now.
Okay, this was also agendaized as a public meeting, so we'd open up the public comments section at this time. And seeing a public comment, we'll close that and come back to the commission to hopefully give some good comments, uh, as Mr. Langford has requested our feedback on what it currently looks like, and if there's anything we'd like to add to it or clarify.
I, I'm gonna... Okay.
Sure, Commissioner Green.
Hey, on thirteen six I dash two, the establishment. I, this, now, this is just, this is just me, but you know where it talks about infill property, handy lot or parcel, which meets the following, and then it's got A, and then it's got B and C, one and two? I almost think I'd like to see one and, that, a, a one and a two in that paragraph, that one, one's kind of the, 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 you know, the five acres, which is bare, which is more like the ideal one and two, which is, and split that up so it's very, so it's easy to see if that's just, you know, format of standpoint. Paragraph A.
So relabel paragraph A to one.
So, so that it just says, um, yeah, so that there, it's kind of broken up in two, so that it's very, it's easier to read. I mean, you have one, you know, 'cause one of them does not exceed five net acres and meets its current configuration for more than ten years, and then, or number two, yeah. You see where I'm going with that?
Yep, yep.
And then, just, just a question, and then I'll ask the third one. Um, so in, in thirteen, in thirteen six I five, in the B, in the design, it talks, talks about attached and multifamily buildings. We're not actually gonna see any multifamily buildings in this, in this overlay zone for like twenty-two years, right?
Thirty-plus years, but we do have exceptions though.
Because of the senior housing.
Senior housing, it could be in QOD, it could be in a, uh, it could be a high finesse project, so there are those exceptions, so that's why we try to cover those bases there.
And then, this is over in the preliminary development plan, I'm just wondering, and this is, this is on the very last page of the report, and it talks about neighborhood compatibility. I'm, I'm just wondering, and I'm talking out loud here, but I'm wondering when we talk about neighborhood compati- neighborhood compatibility, I'm wondering if we shouldn't assign some sort of density number to that to help with neighborhood compatibility? Something, you know, not to exceed, I don't know what the number is, but not to exceed the, 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 the density shouldn't exceed more than ten percent or fifteen percent or something of the surrounding neighborhood, so that somebody doesn't try to put a real high-density thing into a typical neighborhood, I'm just wondering if, if being a little bit more specific there wouldn't hurt?
Are you saying something like, hey, if it's an R one eight, it can't go more than R one ten?
See, I, I don't know, I don't know if I agree with that.
Commissioner Sikowski.
Sorry, I, I, sometimes I feel like if we assign high-density areas just to specific plots ran through the city, we end up with these extremely high-density, you know, block communities, whereas if we have a really nice five-acre infill community that's high-density among low rec- low-density residential or medium-density, it, it can be a nice breakup where we're not necessarily degrading one big plot.
Well, would that, would that be neighborhood compatibility?
I would see it as such in, in the new planning world, but, you know, I, it depends on your platform of what you view as compatible, so I, I, to me, uh, residential use of high-density is compatible with residential medium-density because they're residential, you know, you're not gonna have, for instance, uh, a lot of office business traffic going in there, you're not gonna have, it's still kind of the same use, it's just a higher-density version of that, so i- in my opinion it is, but, you know, opinions differ, so...
No, good point. In the recent planning conference that I attended, that was one of the breakout sessions where it was mentioned, if, if you do have a mix of high-density among lower-density, then you don't get that huge pocket of high-density, and a school isn't dedicated to the high-density, then you have that, that problem area, but if you, if you separate it out and you have some duplexes or some single-family and some high, high-density.
Well, one other caveat to that, that I totally agree with you is that, that, um, you know, a lot of times we end up with communities where children grow up and they want to stay kind of in their same community, but if it's, if it's all low-density or, or medium-density, that, the price point to those can kind of keep those children out of the community, whereas if you have a range of product in that community, it allows people to stay in there and, and transition from new homeowner to, you know, intermediate or, or final homeowner, or maybe you want to downsize but still stay in the community, um, by adding some high-density amongst the other densities will allow for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
So my question is more for spa- so considering both sides of this question that we're talking about, on a case-by-case basis, how much control do we have? Can we look at and say, this time it makes sense to go high-density, but this time it doesn't, and we're not being disparaging from applicant to applicant?
Right, setting a precedent.
Rather than making a blanket statement, can we control this every single time, so without making a change to what you've got here?
Yeah, and, and your discussion illustrated the point why I went down this road instead of the other choice of, of trying to anticipate and and really micromanage each little infill piece. The, and the attorneys can jump in here too, but, uh, the, our, our elected officials have a lot of discretion when it comes to, to zoning property, and, uh, you know, just because you've done it one time over in one part of the city doesn't mean you have to replicate that and do the same thing over, if they can look on, look at this on a case-by-case situation, use the discretion, they're elected officials, they have, they should, they should have retained that authority and, and use their own judgment, weigh, and weigh each project on its own merit based on the context of that specific development, and I don't think you could, you could challenge that.
Yeah, I mean, case law's clear that, that every piece of land is unique, and as long as they're following standards and they're making reasonable policy decisions, they're in good shape. The only time they have a problem is if, if they're making decisions on a purely arbitrary and capricious basis that has nothing to do with any criteria, but has more to do with discrimination or, or whether they like somebody or not, or whatever, but as long as it's truly based upon the lay of the land and the criteria set out in the ordinance, uh, then it, when it comes to zoning, then they have almost uncut discretion. And, and that's why I like the fact that this is laid out as an overlay zone, uh, because then it becomes a, a zoning decision where you do have that additional latitude of discretion, at least at the council level. And usually, when you're making recommendations to the council on any kind of a zoning type issue, then you're acting in your quasi-judicial role, and you're following the criteria of making recommendations, so. I, I think it's a great format, so...
I, I, then in that case, I'd prefer leaving it, if we have discretionary power, so on a case-by-case, I would rather operate it in a broad world than being very micromanaged, as you said.
Commissioner Lizzie?
I agree. My point was just going to be that I think where high-density works is in a planned community where you knew that it was there when you purchased your home, and you knew that that was part of it, and it came in a bunch of amenities, which is why you bought off on it, was because, oh, look, there's a bunch of amenities here, and there's a bigger park, there's a whatever else. If you were in a home and in a development that's, you know, you're already annoyed that somebody's doing something near your home, and they put in apartments, that's a different setup to me than you waited this with your eyes wide open, knowing what you were getting. So making it a case-by-case, I think that that would be a significant benefit.
Alright, thank you. Commissioner Sikowski?
Thank you, um, just along with the same neighborhood compatibility thing, and this is probably more a question for the attorneys, is that, um, what kind of discretion do we have as far as, um, products that they put in there? With this, with this, as far as neighborhood compatibility, for instance, last week, we heard from those that were down kind of in the, uh, Jordan River bottoms there, and they were all very concerned that the product that would come in would have brick and stone, and that there were requirements like that, can we use the neighborhood compatibility, um, to somewhat determine the price point, or is that outside of our bounds?
Well, the general answer to that would be, I mean, if, if something is strictly zoning, you know, are they in this zone and, uh, that's where you have the greatest latitude. Once you start detailing specifically how they can build their buildings, that's when you've got considerably less discretion. Uh, I mean, the, the section here that specifically is gonna deal with design and materials is thirteen six I five, and of course, a lot of that's initial review's gonna be done by your design and review committee, um, and it does have those specific standards of having, what is it, the masonry requirements and so forth. But I would say that the closer that you stick with this thirteen six I five B, especially there, and you're just enforcing that standard, the better off you are. So when you're dealing with things like materials, you really need a written standard in the ordinance that you're following and enforcing. You don't wanna, that's the area where you don't want to just make something up.
Right, okay. I just want to make sure because, um, you know, compatibility is such a general term.
Right, yeah, you know, and what do you, I mean, it's easy to, to enforce compatibility if the building is on, on all three sides out of the exact same masonry structure, and you're trying to enforce something that's almost, you know, that's similar to that, but what do you do if on three or four sides, there's completely different design and materials, so, um, like I say, I, I like the fact that there's at least a few, uh, design criteria here, but the more that you can point chapter and verse at specific criteria, and the less you're making out, the more legally solid you're gonna be.
Great, okay.
Which is what we did, I mean, if you look at, uh, at B, and we, we're referring to existing code requirements.
Right, so a lot of this, you're not rewriting, you're saying, look at subsection thirteen five B six, and that's pretty easy though, right? Yeah.
So the compatibility in this case refers specifically to use?
Right, yeah, yeah, B more for free use, exactly, yeah.
Thank you.
Great, any other comments, feedback that we can provide to city staff?
Yes, Mr. Langford. So in the pre-meeting, there was a, a question about the expiration of these development plans, so I, I hold that up on, on the screen, it's hard to read, um, but basically, I just wanted to show you, so if you look at the proposed ordinance, um, thirteen six I seven, under development plan requirements, uh, letter B talks about the development plan review, um, says the steps outlined in section fifteen three eight of this code shall be followed in connection with applications for approval of the development plan, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, if you go to thirteen, uh, three eight, uh, it'll talk about the section up here. It talks about the, the expiration of the development plans, and, um, and, uh, what is it, thirteen five J ten, uh, D, and it says, uh, master development plan and preliminary development, preliminary sub-area development plan expiration. Preliminary approval of a master development plan or sub-area development plan shall remain valid for a period of two years on receiving approval by the city council, wherein the allowable maximum density drag, um, from approval of the plan shall become void by resolution from the city council upon expiration of development, development plan and the validation of density for the project, density for the defined project, uh, area shall revert to the base density for the underlying zoning district, and the zoning designation shall revert back to the previous zone established prior to the concept development plan approval. So, and then it talks about, and number two, talks about the, the final development plan expiration, same consequence, if they don't move on it, boom, it reverts back, council has to, uh, do that through resolution, but that is what is in the code already, and that's, I, perhaps I can clarify that, uh, in, in the proposed, uh, uh, code, uh, make a more direct link to, um, to that section. Um, but, does that, does that answer your question?
It, it does, but the, I guess the, the concern that I have is that, so we, we create this overlay zone, and we, we, we've seen some other overlay zones in the city that, never mind. Uh, but we have this overlay zone, and they apply for it, it gets applied over the, over the piece, they, they've had the preliminary development plan, all that stuff, and then it falls apart, then we still have an established overlay zone on there, and so the question that I, the, the, the question that would extend beyond that would be, okay, so what do we, how do we handle, that, it, it goes back to, we now have an overlay zone over this piece of property, so the next developer, do they have to come in and ask for the revocation of the zone? To, because they want to do something else with the property? Or do we, or do we just say, it's already zoned, you can do whatever you want with the property, you just come up with it a pre- a preliminary development plan?
No, the preliminary development plan, or, or, I'm sorry, the, the overlay would be based on the specific preliminary development plan. If, 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 uh, that changes ownership, the new ownership is gonna have to comply, or they're gonna have to go back through the process and amend that to tweak it, to modify it.
I, I... So the overlay disappears when the borrower, or when the project owner disappears?
Not necessarily, according to the code right now, it's a two-year, it doesn't talk about change of ownership here in the code, it just talks about uh, the two-year timeline, right? If, if no, if, if no progress is made in two years, then we put it on a city council agenda, uh, with, with the resolution to to remove that overlay, it'll be gone, we'll take that off the map, and you're left with what you had before.
Alright, so, quick question with that, though, I mean, um, it, like, I like that, I like the way that that goes, the, the question I have is do we have a mechanism for tracking that to where it will reliably kick back to the city council within three years? Does it pop up on a computer screen and say, hey, this needs to be on the agenda?
Yeah, the, the great thing about West Jordan is we've got, uh, the Office of Development Assistance, they, we, we've got the, the new munis, uh, uh, system where we can put flags uh, on the, the various projects, and it's triggered and, and, uh,
It just automatically?
Yeah, it just automatically pops up, and so...
Okay, yeah.
We've got, we've got the people and technology in place to keep track of stuff.
Okay, that's awesome. I just want to make sure that it wasn't gonna like slip under the rug and, you know, five years later, we'd be trying to figure out what happened.
But that didn't happen with the PC zone now, that Seventy-Eighth and U one eleven, how, how did we get that one with the oversight?
Yeah, that, that's a great point, Commissioner Green, that, uh, that was, I think, one of the original PC zones, so that was not in our new system, it wasn't on the, our radar, I mean, that was done more than a decade ago. Um, moving forward, we've learned from our mistakes and, and, uh, yeah, we're, we, we track conditional uses, we, we track a lot of stuff now, so... In a city of nearly a hundred fifteen thousand, it, you gotta have systems in place to keep track. In a city of nearly a hundred fifteen thousand, you gotta have systems in place to keep track of this stuff.
I've got one last question. How, in, in this preliminary development plan, how do we enforce any setbacks? I mean, if they decided they wanted to put for how, I mean, is, is, is there a requirement to have by co, by fire codes or minimum setbacks? And I, I guess I, I'm not good enough on the codes yet to, to know where that's in, where that's in here. Is that part of the design standards or?
Well, yeah, this is not going to supersede or trump the, the International Building Code. Uh, we have to comply with that and the fire, international fire code. And that will be part of review. Uh, we've got the fire marshal who's typically here. He reviews all of the, the new developments. Uh, we've got the, our staff in the building department that reviews stuff. And it all depends on construction, so there's a lot of moving pieces, a lot of different codes, but, you know, if they were to apply for the, the IDO one, then they're gonna have to comply with standard setbacks and stuff unless they, they specifically ask for, for deviation. The IDO two, they're, they're likely gonna come in and in their development plan, we're gonna see, okay, this is the setbacks. And we're, we're gonna have a graphic that shows you the setbacks and, uh, we can, we can, uh, see if that's again, going to be neighborhood compatible and, and be respectful of the context of that development and, there's a lot of different options and, 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 uh, plans that are thrown out around the, the country, around the world that, that, you know, nesting tight homes and stuff, uh, that, that we could consider in these tight little infill developments, but that'll be clearly marked, reviewed by the DRC, by the planning commission, and then approved or denied by the council. So lots of different layers, lots of different eyes looking at these things. It's not going to be a really fast process, but at least we'll have, again, the vehicle to, to address some of these tight windows that we have in the East Side.
Great, thank you. Any other feedback to our staff applicants?
You, you brought up the twelve hundred foot radius. What is, I, I'm just curious what everybody else, the twelve hundred foot radius. Is that, is that too far when we're talking about infills? I mean, that, that's, that's a quarter mile?
Almost, yeah. A little over thirteen is, is a quarter mile, but. Uh, again, I, I looked at, uh, at multiple cities with, that had radius designations and that was kind of ballpark, you know, a thousand feet up to, to, you know, over a quarter mile. Some, I think there was one community that was a half mile. That was, I forget, uh, some St. Peters Bay, or Burt, Florida or something.
The, the only reason I asked the question is, I, what comes to mind is the, the Viscerelli Farm that we dealt with, uh, over there on, uh, on the ridge. That, that's that ten acre piece of property that's just in from Ninetieth South. You know which one I'm talking about? About Ninetieth South and
Yep.
About eleven. And if we drew a twelve hundred foot radius from there, the twelve hundred foot radius would actually put us in Sandy. And, and you're talking about the Jordan River Parkway there. And I, I mean, obviously that's not developable, but then there's the, there's the piece of property to the south of it that's owned by his brother, that's, that's got a big piece of property. So I'm wondering how that would fit in with this part of the ordinance, because it was about a ten acre piece of property.
I'm glad that you, you made that distinction of between vacant and, and, uh, and developable, because there's a lot of that that, that could be termed vacant or, or unapproved, but, but you're never going to be able to develop on the Jordan River Parkway uh, or the Rock Mountain Power Substation. But, uh, you know, I, like, again, I, I wish I had a couple examples and, uh, I will, before we take this to the city council, I'll, uh, I'll bring up that particular instance, uh, or that, that, that situation. Uh, if there are any others that you'd like me to, to apply this ordinance to, to see if they would qualify, I can, and I'm all ears. I'm, I'm welcome to suggestions. So that, that piece is a great one, Commissioner Green. Larson Meadows, it was another one that was kind of on my radar. That subdivision is gone now. It's, it's, there's no activity on that particular infill piece.
Which one was, which one was Larson Meadows?
Um, off of Redwood, just south of the, uh, the storage units.
The one at seventy-two ninety-seven?
Oh, that's Legacy. Sorry, that's Legacy. Larson was further west.
That was the one at like seventy-two ninety-seven or something, right? It's, it's the one that went back off the house and we, we've looked at, it's been looked at twice with, once with Amara Court and once with the other.
Yeah, that's the one.
Are there any other infill pieces that I should look at?
No, I, I think that, honestly, I think I like the way that this is written, because what it does is it limits, we, we don't want everybody coming in saying, well, I want to use the IDO one, I want to use the IDO two. This, this limits it pretty severely to the, the parcels that really could fit into this. And, and I like that limitation, because I feel like this could be abused by developers if it's, you know, not properly restricted.
I just, I just want to make sure that we do, do this. Like that one that you're talking about, the legacy on Redwood Road. You know, if you drive, if you draw twelve hundred foot diameter around that, you're going east of Redwood Road, you're going west of Redwood Road. And, and the question would be, with Redwood Road being that natural barrier, do we want to use the twelve hundred foot to extend that to say it's an infill? Because y- you know, it, you know what I'm saying? Is that with that natural barrier, do we want to do that? Uh, and, and so it's just something that, you know, when you said twelve hundred foot, that's when I started thinking about pieces of property like the one at Ninetieth, that one. Are there any other pieces like that that sit really, y- you know, like conceivably, as you're talking about infill, and we're talking about vacant or dilapidated buildings or structures, uh, I think of a corner of Seventyeth South and, and Thirteenth West that could ea, that could easily fall into that, and that would be a perfect infill, and there's nothing else around it. But is that, y- you know, so that one works for there, but are there other places that you've got an infill piece of property that, like the one on Redwood or over on, by the river, that because there's natural barriers like Ninetieth South, like, because that's what I'm thinking on that one at Ninetieth South. It's just in from Ninetieth South, but if you draw, draw the twelve hundred foot radius, it adds the piece of property that we ju, just dealt with two weeks ago, and that might not be more than twenty-five per, percent vacant and all those kind of things, but that's a per, but that piece of property may be a perfect for an infill. So I'm just, conceptually, I'm thinking about natural barriers and the twelve hundred foot mark. Because I wouldn't consider that one that we developed, that, you know, the one that we were talking about the other day. It's really close to that and all the, you know, and all the agricultural across the, that's eventually designated for PO across the Ninetieth. I'd hate to see that destroy if that ten acre piece of property that's only seven, seven acres developable because of the slope. I'd hate to see us not be able to use the infill ordinance on that because we've made that twelve hundred foot radius so expansive that it brought something in that we didn't intend to.
Well, maybe what we could do is def, more clearly define what developable means, because, you know, if there's like an agricultural belt or something that's being utilized, then that, I would, you know, I would deem that non-developable at the moment, as long as it's.
But you see what I'm saying? Is that, that one, the one that we were developing two weeks ago might actually be in the twelve hundred foot radius of that other one that down the street. And then all of a sudden, we say, well, it's not developed yet, and we have to wait another fifteen years for it to be developed. So that property sits vacant for, that ten acre sits for another fifteen years, so.
Right.
The, the, there's a couple of pieces of property that I think, you know, particularly separated by the big streets and those kind of things that we may want to, I, I don't know how you describe that, but it's something to think about.
Maybe, maybe if we talk about it as a, a permeable barrier or impermeable barrier, like an arterial road could define, you know, as far as like blockability or, or, uh, you know, we could have boundaries set that way. City boundaries or, or large arterial, arterial or, um, U-DOT roads, collector roads could be a definable barrier.
So you would, you would measure, so if, if, if that overlay, so you wouldn't count anything past, uh, an impermeable?
Right, so if you had something, say, to the west of Redwood Road, the twelve hundred foot radius would extend to the west and it would clip off at Redwood Road. Then it would give you the ability to still look at that, because with something that's so impermeable like that, it's, it's almost like you have a node on either side of the road that's, you know, arguably a different boundary entirely, so.
And we may even see something like that down by Mountain View, the way some of this stuff has been developed in there. There might be some small par, parcels that are going to need to be developed that aren't consistent. And, but everything west of Mountain View is open and the twelve hundred feet messes it up.
Right. So, and there's, I mean, there's really not that many roads. We have Mountain View, Seventy-eight hundred South, Ninetieth, Redwood.
Fifty-six.
Maybe fifty-six hundred, well, I, I don't know if it even include fifty-six, because that's pretty small right now, but maybe we could define it by, uh, the number of lanes that it has or the traffic volume somehow.
Well, that, that traffic volume's changed, so we, we already, on our transportation master plan, we already have the roads labeled arterials, highways.
Okay, yeah.
And so that, that's an easy.
Right, yeah.
Clear line to draw, so that's a good thought.
I don't know, it's something to think about.
Do you have any other questions, Commissioner Skoski?
No, thank you.
Any other feedback for staff?
Other than the fact that I think it's something we need.
Good job.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Well, I will make that a motion then. Based on the findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council for the proposed tax amendment to Title thirteen of the West Jordan Municipal Code as addressed in this report relating to infill development.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pack, second by Commissioner Green. Any discussion of the motion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. As Mr. Linker mentioned, it's the city coming of age, or I guess it's my son, who's a computer whiz, would say it's defragmenting the the city, which are reasonably, using all the space, even though we have the most open space of any city with a hundred and eleven, a hundred fifteen?
We're close to a hundred fifteen, you know, based on the, the numbers they crunched for the cap and grade at the end of last year. We're, we're knocking on that door of a hundred fifteen.
Well, great. I would like to also make a motion this evening that we officially codify the requirement for an applicant or an applicant's designated representative to be present in a planning commission meeting to present and also give answers to the planning commission and address citizens' comments and planning commissions, planning commissioners' questions. It's been our mode of operation, but it hasn't been officially codified.
Would, would that be, would we just amend our, I guess the question, will we amend the?
Bylaws?
The.
We can amend the bylaws to have that officially included in the bylaws.
Or do we need to, to amend that as part of the city ordinance?
I think it could go just right in your, uh, bylaws and rules of procedure, because you have, you know, certain provisions right now that's, that are similar, so, that detail certain procedures of your meeting. So I, I think there's a couple of places that would fit nicely in, and I'm trying to remember with your rules. See, these rules of procedure may be amended at any meeting of the planning commission. So we could have that probably ready for your next meeting if you'd like, just an amendment. So that amendment would, uh, basically say that if there's any application, that the applicant or a representative be present for their item on the agenda?
And if not, then the item automatically is tabled to the next meeting.
Do you need to say something amongst that they need to be prepared to answer questions, so that they don't send a representative in?
Right, somewhere, yeah, someone that's capable of.
Correct, I think that's.
That's subsequent knowledge to answer questions.
Okay.
And perhaps do we want that to also say that when they're called up? For instance, the last meeting, we had someone show up late and it jumbled the meeting. Do we want to still hear them that meeting if they show up late?
I think.
Okay.
I think last time we had, pushed it to the end of the meeting.
I, I would prefer that, just because things happen and sometimes.
So if they're late, they go to the end of the meeting. If they're not present, it gets tabled to the next, to the next meeting.
Okay.
But they still buy Ms. Larson Cathiri for making her way on.
Second.
So just a question on that. Is that, so if they come, they are there, but they're not prepared to answer any kind of questions, does it get tabled somewhere?
Then you could treat them as if it's, if they're not present and go, yeah, go to the next meeting.
Since, since we're talking about that, can we, could, I, I, I've been asked for, would it, would also make sense that we put that in there, that the applicants generally limit it to ten minutes? I think we've tried to do that, but.
Right.
Is that not in there?
I think it's already in there.
Is it in, is it in there? Okay, I didn't, I didn't remember seeing it in there somewhere.
We get a trapdoor that's installed with a time on it, that ten minutes is open. Yeah.
So I'm, I'll second the motion.
Are we entertaining that motion?
Okay, so, um, the motion, again, I guess, let, let me, because we probably should motion and second take vote on this, because you really won't have any direction to do anything. It would be a moot point for you to bring anything back if we're not going to pass the, the motion, correct?
Right, right.
So let, let me re-motion. I move that we officially codify the requirement to have an applicant or an applicant's designated representative be present at the planning commission meeting to present information about the application and to give answers to the planning commission and address citizens' comments. And if that person is not able to authoritatively speak to the comments in a manner that is, oh, that's a little bit subjective, isn't it? In a manner that is approved by the planning commission, that we have the ability to table that item to the following planning commission. And it will, and or move the agenda item back further to allow the applicant additional time to arrive at the meeting. How's your shorthand, Mr. Murray?
I got it.
Did you have that?
And should we also say that if they're not at the meeting, then it automatically tables to the following meeting?
Yes.
I'll second.
Yes. Yes, because we, because we've said that, uh, as we discussed in the pre-meeting, there are, it, it puts the city at liability if we're moving something forward that the applicant doesn't have an opportunity to speak on.
It, it's more comfortable for me to be able to, to discuss with them, because I feel a lot of times that the applicant brings information that's valuable to us, and I would, I would hate to see a good opportunity for West Jordan to have like a business come in that could provide, you know, uh, good services to the community members as well as good tax dollars to the city get shut down simply because inaccurate information was given.
And the citizen comment and concern wasn't able to be addressed.
Yes, or, or was incorrectly stated.
It's unfortunate for the, that we had a hospital last time.
Mm-hmm.
If they were all here for Adam Nash's thing, how unfair is that to them to have to wait until the end of the meeting because he was late?
Yeah. That's a good point.
But, uh, true, but then is it worse to come back two weeks later?
Yes.
Or wait till the end of the meeting?
Perhaps, maybe.
I thi, I think we just push them to the end of the meeting. If they don't show up, then they forfeit that week.
Does it need to be the end of the meeting? Or I didn't see Adam Nash coming in. But if, but if we notice that he comes in, um, as Julie mentioned, he came in like right after that. I, I didn't notice that, so maybe it doesn't necessarily need to be to the end of the meeting. It could be, if, if he comes, we just insert, if the applicant comes, we insert that person. We, we don't necessarily move it all the way to the end. We just defer it.
To the next item.
Next one, for the next item.
I wonder if, is it possible to still do a public hearing without the applicant and then table to the next week? That way, if individuals come to discuss that particular item, they still have the opportunity to stand up and have their say, and then we still table it to the following meeting and still give the applicant an opportunity to speak on the item, but then the public doesn't have to come back. And still give the applicant an opportunity to speak on the item, but then the public doesn't have to come back.
They probably wanna hear from the applicant.
They probably do, they wanna hear their.
Well, they would have the opportunity to come back to that following meeting if they really wanted to hear.
We have to post a public hearing to make sure we don't make sense, it doesn't make sense.
Correct, and is that kosher, does that work, if you have a public comment in one meeting, then you have an applicant present in a different meeting that you don't have?
Yeah, I mean, the preferred way to do it would be to just post another public hearing, you know, allow people, afford people another opportunity, because you, you never get. In trouble if you provide more opportunities for people to speak, so, and then, then no one can cry foul that if they showed up and wanted to speak on the, the first meeting, they can speak. If they wanted to hear from the applicant and speak again, they can do that too.
Okay.
I mean, in a perfect world, that's what you do, the only loss there is, you know, we're publishing it twice, there might be an extra cost or effort, but it's worth doing, but.
So.
And maybe we pass, put that in our fee schedule and pass the cost along to them.
That's a good idea.
Like the cost of re-noticing?
But it is the right thing to do to still hold a public hearing, because if people didn't consider the way they ought to be able to speak, but, but in a perfect world, a public hearing is two-way communication. That the public is receiving information and giving information and it's incomplete if the applicant's not there and there's not the ability to have the two-way communication, but. So I think it's great to send a message, you need to be here, you know, so.
If I may too, I'm, I'm sensitive to Julie's time and, and my staff's time. Is it possible that if that were to play out, if we could open a public hearing and just keep it open? To the next meeting, so we don't have to re-notice, re-go through all the, the heavy staff, uh, consuming.
How do we do that then?
Yeah, here's, here's one way that I've dealt with that in the past, is you, when we, we could change the template of how we do our standard public hearing notices to just simply say. There will be a public hearing held on, you know, March seventh meeting and there may be additional, an additional public hearing held at the one, you know. Either or both of the following two meetings or something like that, just to let the public know, hey, there's a public hearing here, there may be another additional public hearing. The meeting or two after, that's another way to deal with it.
I guess we have to strenuously highlight maybe.
Can I just continue to a specific date, we don't have to announce it.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's the other way, that's, I think, more of our common procedure is continuing to a specific date, so.
So just as a courtesy, wouldn't it just be simple enough just to have him say, we're not closing the public comment, but because the applicant's not here, we're gonna continue this discussion. So you're welcome to come back, we haven't closed the meeting, they know that they can come back, we don't have to send paper out to people again.
Okay, great, but let's include that in the motion that I made, that we can continue that public comment and we can move.
Very good.
And we can. Right, so this is.
Amendment.
The new friendly amendment, my own amendment, a, and then also that we can bump the applicant on the next agenda item, doesn't necessarily need to be at the bottom of the, at the bottom of the list, according to our discretion.
There you go, great, the amendment.
Okay, great, so we've got the friendly amendment and a second, and that by Commissioner Staskin, any discussion of that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero and we'd like to welcome our new deputy city attorney here and thank our police officer for being in attendance, thank you sir. And our good friend Bill Heiner, who's here, I've told, former planning commissioner, I think he uh, he got tired of our conversation, but we're grateful he showed up.
He realized when he got out.
Say aye, any other items to discuss before we adjourn to the seat?
Real, real quick, I was just informed and this doesn't really impact the, the planning commission that much, but we were finally, after years and years and years of trying to get the. Union Pacific's uh, uh, permission to cross the railroad at Seventy South, uh, near Airport Road, finally just got that. That's why Mr. Murphy came in and talked to me, finally got that, so, but probably this week we'll, we'll go out to bid to uh. Uh, connect this missing link, which will really allow for greater connectivity and, and help with the, the traffic up, up off the forty eighth, so, just a, just a heads up.
Right.